Good evening and welcome to the August 28, 2017 meeting of the Town of Scarborough Planning Board. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jay, can you call the roll, please?
Yes, in the absence of Karen Patterson this evening, I will do my best to do roll call. I think I can handle that, I hope. Mr. Geteri?
Yeah.
Ms. Henderson?
Here.
Ms. Saunders?
Here.
Mr. Fellows?
Here.
Mr. Bealy?
Here.
Ms. Ogles?
Here.
And I note the absence of Mr. McGee.
Oh, thank you. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the July 17, 2017 meeting.
Do you all get copies of the July?
No.
Minutes? I don't believe you actually received those. I saw an email earlier today that-
I would like to move with your acceptance.
Yeah, we'll take those up at the next-
Table them, damn.
I remember them and they were fine.
All right, thank you. And speaking of things being tabled, item number four on the agenda, 108 Muzzy LLC was tabled at the request of the applicant due to the status of that ongoing review. So we will see that, correct. So we will see that at a future date, so our relatively short agenda got a little bit shorter. And the next item, JXH LLC requests for site plan amendment review for Ameriprise Financial Planning, 5 Ward Street, Assessors Map U30, Lot 40. Would you like to introduce this one, Jay?
Sure, I can give a brief introduction. So the application's before you for a site plan amendment for a site that was actually approved back in 2007 on Ward Street. That approval enabled the conversion of a residential dwelling into an office building, really a sort of more of a financial office type use. So the applicant is before you with a proposal to do a modest expansion to that existing building and associated parking lot and infrastructure improvements. You have received a round of staff comments as well as comments from Woodern and Curran, who did civil engineering review. I will note that the parcel is in the TBC 2 district. It's also sort of the applicable standards are, as I just noticed, the TBC 2 standards as well as the site plan review ordinance. I will note that as of during the deliberation or the review process, I should say, it was noted that there's some additional due diligence regarding existing utilities and easements on the property that's required. And we've had some ongoing conversations with the applicant representative about that and they're aware of that and are prepared to do that work. And those are items that really are going to need to be done before we can really do a complete and thorough review. But the applicant, I believe, still wants to appear before you to be sure there aren't any additional issues related to those site plan review elements that weren't otherwise raised in staff comments so that there are other items to address, that they're prepared to do so moving forward. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it back to you.
Thanks, Jay.
I'm going to go grab an easel, I noticed you left it out in the hall.
And I'll hand it over to the applicant's representative.
These both work? Yeah.
Nope.
Not that one. Steve Blais here, representing Ameriprise. I'm here with John Hughes and Peter Heil from our office. As Jay stated, we're here for more of our sketch plan at this point. We were planning to go in full bore, try to get it done in one meeting. But we wrote a letter to the sewer department, sewer district, just to give them a heads up that we're making some changes. We're adding about 700 square feet of office, really conference room and a little bit of office, gives Ameriprise a little more elbow room. So here we go. So the addition, as you see, is in the darker orange. So yeah, Ted Heidrick was here with, it was Modern Woodman at the time. He had converted this, as Jay pointed out, 2007, change of use application from residential to offices. So what we're adding is the bit of office right here. And the square towards the back is a deck, be an outdoor deck, just for meetings and employee use. We are adding four parking spaces. You'll see there's six shown here, but that's because to make it work, we have to eliminate two here to make a drive aisle. The grade does drop off in the back a little bit, but it does work pretty well for us to treat stormwater. We'll end up receiving water from a good part of the roof and some of the parking lot and the addition and some of the lawn. So we're treating a lot more than we're increasing impervious surface. We're talking about, this lot is, the entire lot's what, .58 acres? Obviously not a huge lot. And we're increasing impervious surfaces by .05 acres, so it's a pretty small increase. But we did review this with Angela and she likes our approach. What we need to do now, so to finish the story about reaching out to the sewer district, they came back and they had noticed there's four other easements that could potentially be on our property. So our surveyor was on vacation this last week. We couldn't get the survey work done in time, so that's why we're pushing it out to the next meeting. He is back in the office today, back from, where was he again? Went to a conference down for NCEES, Worthy Cause. But he'll be back in the office tomorrow and we're hoping to get this easement stuff done this week or next to come back for approval. But there aren't a lot of changes, but we are adding an office back there. The tree line here, I noticed that was a comment that came up. I don't know that we're really taking away too many trees, maybe a little bit? Yeah. And it is, so two sides of us are parking now. There's parking here and parking here to serve the O'Reilly's Cure, Bessie Commons, that whole area. There is, there remains a residential use at the bottom of the page. We are not touching that row of, I believe it's arborvitae's. They've, Ted had planted them back in '07, '08 and they've kept growing since. So I remember at the time, there was, we had proposed a fence and the neighbor and Ted talked, they preferred a natural buffer a lot more than a fence, so. With that, I don't know that we have too much else to add. We've talked about comments. I mean, the treatment we're going to do is a pretty conventional underground soil filter. I'm pretty sure you've seen those come before you a number of times. Pretty conventional design. Yeah, I don't know that we have much else. We are going to, in this area here, we're going to transplant some arborvitae's, put them here to provide a little bit of screening for the porch area. We'll end up putting some evergreens up here to just create a little bit of break in the space and that's about it. There is some discovery yet to be done. There's a catch basin on the corner of our property that appears to lie within the easement for drainage and sewer. But we followed that pipe, we couldn't tell where it connected and we're trying to figure out through AMAC, AMAC or, no, Stantec, sorry. It was a Dulukahoffman design, actually Angela's design, right? Anyway, things have changed, the market crashed in '08. There's, you know, there were plans in that whole area and we need to get to the bottom where this pipe connects. It appears to connect somewhere, it looks newer, but that is something that we're needing to research between now and the finish line. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
If I could, just for a point of clarity, there was some discussion about the tree or disturbance of trees. Staff comments was really referring to the sort of landscape row of arborvitae's and the potential for any disturbance there with the grading, not along the back.
Okay.
But you've sort of addressed that stating that you didn't think those were going to be impacted, so that was really the staff question.
Oh, good, thanks, sorry about that.
Thank you. We do have the opportunity for a public comment on this item. There's anyone else who'd like to up and speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to board discussion. For that, actually Angela, is there anything that you would add in terms of the due diligence or other trends that you were looking at?
I did meet with Steve and Peter on Monday and since then I've had the opportunity to talk to Carrie Anderson, who developed and actually did probably a lot of the construction there. So I think I might have a little more information to help that catch basin after today. So that's that recent, just today. And I think a lot will have to do with the easements and really that catch basin and how that's kind of designed on the spillway is a little odd and trying to figure that out. So there might be some tweaking of that system, but-
Okay. Yeah, we feel pretty comfortable that there's vertical room to make it work, so we'll work with Angela to, they're all squared away.
All right, thank you. Susan, anything?
Well, interestingly enough, Angela just took away one of my major questions, which was the number six on site plan review staff comments, incorporation of existing catch basins, but it sounds like you're on top of that. I don't have to worry about that anymore. I'll toss that one off my list. Okay. Now there are just little things, you know, I'm not going to, I don't want to make a big deal about it, but the survey, the survey of the project seems to be incomplete. Am I assuming that these are all being taken care of now? Can I go through them?
I think that's what he just-
Yeah, to explain the survey part, or would you like me to answer now or wait?
No, I just want to make sure that, I mean, you're here. Is anything you want us to know about this? If you want to come back and answer those questions, that's fine.
Yeah, I generally like to talk about stuff upfront if we can, so we have a better chance at-
I don't have any real problems with this. I would like to have some concept of what the building is going to look like, but I don't, I can't require that, but I'm just a visual person. It would be kind of nice to get a sense of what it's going to look like when it's completed. Other than that, I have no problems, thank you.
Thanks. Roger?
Actually, I don't have many questions either. I guess the big issue is the drainage and the catch basins and who owns them and where they go.
Exactly.
But other than that, it seems like a pretty simple addition, you know? I don't really have any problem with it.
Thanks. Roland?
In addition to the, I think the easements, due diligence, and which includes the catch basin and drainage, I'd definitely be interested in who's going to do the post-construction maintenance after it gets done. I think that's really important to understand that the investment that you're making in the underdrained soil filter will be there in perpetuity. Other than that, I'm also interested in whether or not Scarborough Sanitary District and Portland Water District have a statement of whether or not the capacity is there for whatever change is being made to the building. Other than that, I have absolute faith and trust that you'll work with staff to move through the items that have already been identified in staff comments.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Rachel?
Yeah, I, like Ms. Ogles, had a little difficulty with the visualizing the addition and how that was going to work because while you were very clear on what the addition itself would be, I had difficulty connecting it to the main, to the main building. I note that the main entrance is on Ward Road and there is an ADA entrance through the parking lot, but also all of the parking that you're proposing is much further away from the building. And people being people, they're going to start using the ADA entrance a lot more. Just, so it becomes a question of actually where is your main, your main entrance? And you might take a look at how that flow is going to work. And the second floor, is that at all ADA accessible?
No, we're not going to have an elevator to the second floor, but I believe the second floor's office, correct?
Just office based, okay.
So it's not like the lunchroom or anything like that?
Yeah. Well, I did note that you were planning an ADA bathroom in that expansion along with a little kitchen, so.
Yeah, we feel that's what ought to be done there.
So, you know, I just kind of would like to see how it's going to fit because I am having a little difficulty. Other than that, I don't have any questions. I think my colleagues have covered any that I had to begin with. Thank you.
Okay, so just to make sure I understand that there's more flow going into the ADA access, what you're-
Yeah, I was wondering how you, if you would, if it does kind of change the definition of main entrance, which right now goes off of Ward Street.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
By putting all of the parking to the rear, folks, as they get out of their car in that new parking area, they're going to go into the first entrance they see.
Right, so just to clarify, the way we've been, every time I've been to the office, it is, it's this door and that's where reception is. So today, everyone uses that, the ADA entrance.
Okay.
And it's, it's a fairly small use. I don't know that the, we blow it up pretty big on the plan here at a 10 scale, but it's not a whole lot of traffic, I don't think.
You can come on up and introduce yourself, just for the record. Thanks.
So John Hughes, and this is my building. So, and I'm your neighbor, just so we know. We're right across, 5 Ward's right across the street here, so just putting it in context. So I have a small financial planning practice, to answer your question there, and I've got about eight staff people and that's the majority of the parking that's coming in for it. So at any given time, we have back-to-back meetings and on a very busy day, I might have six or seven clients visit in a given day there. So what we do is right now, we leave the opening to the entrance open for clients. So they always have a place. So they've got the handicap parking, they've always got additional spaces to be able to park into as they grow, as they come in and out. So the flow of the traffic is just simply clients, individual clients coming in and out throughout the day there. The staff is going to be the furthest away, the, you know, my team is going to be the first away as it stands there. The whole premise of the ADA and the likes of that is so we would have a first floor conference room. That's the beginning and the end of this whole process that we're at right now, so we could have a conference room that was all on the first floor and ADA accessible and as my clients age and just as we needed to expand, so. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Anything else? We'll see if Rick has any.
I just had one question. I'm just out of curiosity, where is the potential easement issue? Is it the parking lot or is the-
Yeah, we're engineers, not surveyors, but we suspect that it's all here.
Probably right there.
There is a sewer line under there, eight inch, sorry. There was a proposed 18-inch storm line, but I think the plans have changed. That's what Angela and I are going to chat about later on this week. So we think they're all pretty much here and there's one or two easements that actually appear to be totally off our property, but we're going to check, make sure it's all-
So your parking, your proposed parking area and the new renovation isn't anywhere necessarily in or near the easement?
It really shouldn't be.
Probably not.
Right, but I mean, the sewer district, you know, they're doing their job, they want things to be documented. As it turns out, yeah, as it turns out, the surveyor, just to give you a little background of how it all comes together, the original boundary survey was done by Dan Delfonzo, who's retired. When we picked it up, our surveyor, Neto Land Surveys, did existing conditions on top of the boundary. So now, we have to go back a little bit to see, well, wait a minute, these easements are a lot older than the survey was, what's going on? So we're bringing closure to it all, but there was a bit of a process, a little bit of research that had to be done. The topography, we were going off what was built and calling it existing conditions. Things are a little bit different, but we're having the surveyor go out there for the boundary anyway, so we're going to have him get, he's going to spot shot everything and we'll have everything up to date, so.
That's all I have, the rest of it looks fine. Thanks. Yeah, I don't think I really have anything to add in terms of questions. I think it's all been pretty well covered between your recap and discussion we've already had. So just to recap, appreciate, we appreciate the clarification on the, you know, the homework that needs to be done by the surveyor and trust that will get worked out as well as the sort of ongoing other due diligence that you'd be doing at this stage anyway. There's a comment about confirming water sewer capacity, which again is pretty routine. Make sure that we've got good documentation of the post-construction stormwater management, including who's going to be doing that. I appreciate the clarification on the arborvitae, that row, that upper row there, that that's being left alone and just continue to grow, as well as the sort of clarification about what's behind the expansion and the flow and the flow of traffic and so forth. So with that, I really don't have any additional questions. Is there any other feedback you'd like from us at this stage in order to be able to flush things out?
I don't think so. I think we're nearly there, we just have a little bit of homework to do.
Yeah, no, it sounds like you're engaged with all the right people and we'll look forward to seeing the next iteration.
Yeah, great. So we're trying to come back in three weeks, we'll, hopefully the survey can be done, so.
All right.
Great.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're already up to staff's report.
Let's see, so I'll report out on, I think all of you on the planning boards saw some invitations to comprehensive plan neighborhood meetings we had called Imagine the Future, the planning staff and SEDCO working in concert with the long-range planning committee sort of put on. We had held a series of four meetings in different neighborhoods throughout town, from Pine Point and Higgins Beach out to North Scarborough and the last one was here at the town's public library, actually. All four meetings were set up in the same fashion, asking the same questions. We felt it was appropriate to, rather than sort of try to hold one big meeting here in chambers, to really go out and give folks an opportunity, understanding it was August and in the summertime, it could be hard to capture people, so give lots of opportunity for folks to show up. So we're very pleased to say we had over 50 people attend and so sort of think that's-
All four?
Between the four, sort of looking at the aggregate of them, so. So we thought that, you know, if we had one, one meeting here, if we got 30, that would be good, so I think we, you know, got some pretty good attendance. And, you know, the idea of those meetings was really to begin a community discussion around the future vision for Scarborough and get people thinking big picture as we head into Planapalooza, which is on August 25th through 28th, which is going to be our, did I say August? Yes, thank you, September. September 25th to 28th, good catch.
I feel so much better.
That's right, what's happening right now?
Why am I here? There.
So, and you know, those events are going to be occurring both here in Town Hall as well as across the street, actually they're going to be occurring, I'm sorry, at the high school cafeteria as well as across the street above Scarborough grounds is where we're going to be holding sort of the work sessions, if you will. And so staff will be sort of pushing out a lot of advertisement and discussion around it in the next couple of weeks. We want to be sure we didn't start to get people, start advertising too soon, so we, folks should start to see a lot of information around that. And we encourage board members to attend as much of those events as you're able and let your friends, family and neighbors know all about them. So that's one item I had to report on.
Yeah, I'll just add, I was able to attend one of those down at the Pine Point Fire Station and thought it was an interesting conversation that understandably kind of started with people talking about things that were specific to that micro area, but then expanded to some broader issues that were more sort of townwide and including traffic and things like that. So, and as you said, I think, you know, particularly given the time of year, to have that level of aggregate participation is good. It's always a challenge to try and get people engaged and try to figure out which are the right conduits to reach people and get them to come out. And there are some people who are only here during the summer, there are some people who are away during the summer, so there's never sort of a perfect way to do it, but I think the staff and the consultant have done a good job from what I've seen of kind of getting people engaged and soliciting that participation, so, thanks.
I have a quick question. Are the list of questions and perhaps, you know, minutes or agendas still available on the website?
Excellent, thank you for that question. It feels like a softball and I very much appreciate it. ScarboroughEngage.org is a website that we have launched, specific to the comprehensive plan, and it is an interactive website where folks can go on and see the minutes from those meetings, but more importantly, all the questions that were asked. And again, you know, these were sort of big visioning questions. People can go right on and answer right online and other residents can have an opportunity to see them. So as it says, an interactive website.
The name of that website again, Jay?
ScarboroughEngage.org. Thanks for asking. I didn't even have to set you guys up, it just happened. Love it. What a good board. I didn't even have to set you guys up, it just happened. Love it. What a good board.
Do we have an administrative amendment report?
Two items to report on. One, at the Willowdale Golf Course, board members may recall, they were before you a little while ago, wanted to, actually went to rezoning change to allow for a manager's apartment, if you will. And so the applicant put together a plan that had a pretty modest addition to an existing shed out there. It's really where they store their golf court carts. And they were going to then expand that for additional golf cart. And then the apartment above reviewed that with the chairman and found that to be acceptable as an administrative approval, so that's been dealt with. And then the other item is the None Such Brew Pub. Their sign was also administratively approved, and they are...
Okay.
That's where everyone is right now.
I'm also sure that I would like to not see those signs. But we can talk about that at another place and another time.
Okay. Fair enough.
All right. Any planning, thank you, Jay.
Yep.
That's all set for that. Any planning board correspondence? No? Okay. Any planning board comments?
Yes. First of all, I'd like to encourage people, again, who might be watching, to check out the website in terms of the comprehensive plan. Sometimes I think it feels as if the process we're going through is very complicated in order to get to what is it we really want to do with our new comprehensive plan. But the website seems to be a really good collection center for what's going on around and about us in terms of this. This is a different approach to how to understand what people want. But the bottom line is, the town really wants to know what people want, and the best place to start is at the website. It's a really good, we haven't had a lot of success in Scarborough over the years with our website, but it's gotten to be, it has become much more sophisticated, professional, and accessible. So I encourage everybody to check, check that out. And then I have a personal thing. I have a plug-in hybrid, so I was very bold. And I went down there tonight, and I plugged in my hybrid. It all seems to be fine, but I can't get into the building. The building is locked, so I have to drive.
I wonder why you're walking around so...
I was walking, it's only Wednesday, and I didn't suppose to be, I don't understand all this. So let me just say, access to the building is not all that clear. I appreciate the town providing it, by the way. It's a wonderful service, and thank you for doing that.
Great, thank you. Roger?
I would like to echo Sue's comments regarding the comp plan. In my estimation, the town is really reaching out to the citizens, offering them a chance to participate. It irritates me to no end when citizens, you know, come up with some problems and they've never been involved in something. And this is an opportunity for them to be involved, so, so they should not be, in the future, saying, "I wasn't aware of that," or something like that. So this is an opportunity. I'm not sure how many other communities reach out to the, to the citizens as Scarborough is doing with this, and I really commend the staff for doing it and, and the long-range planning committee. And I really do wish the citizens would get engaged and, you know, find out what's really going on in town and, and offer their input.
Thank you. Anyone else? Rachel?
Yeah, Susan reminded me of something that I've thought about for a while, and that is, in terms of our design standards or review, we've got nothing in there that really addresses the issue of, especially apartment buildings, offering the plug-in centers for hybrids. And as we see some of the, some of, let's say, call it, call them the more upscale apartments going into Scarborough, that would be probably a very attractive amenity. But absent anything in the, in code, or in the ordinance, in the ordinances, or in the design standards, there's not much we can do immediately. But I would suggest that we, or the town council, find a way to encourage that sort of inclusion.
Thank you.
Thanks. Robin, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just wondering what, if you could talk a little bit about what opportunities there are for the public to engage in the Planapalooza. I know, you know, you've talked about there are going to be meetings between September 25th to September 28th. So what does, what does that entail, or what opportunities are there for public engagement at that point?
Sure. So, yeah, in addition to the meetings that we had in August, Planapalooza is going to kick off on the evening of the 25th. That will be at the high school cafeteria, and that's really going to be an introduction to the four-day event. And then we are going to start to get our hands dirty, you know, start to have a conversation. And this is going to be led, part of the reason why the town selected the consultant group that we did, was they are going to be bringing with them a team of experts. They're going to be bringing folks who are experts in, in land use design, in transportation, in climate, climate change and resiliency issues, economic type analysis. So they're going to be bringing a host of folks to these events to help shepherd our discussion. So as I said, it kicks off the evening of the 25th, a big community kickoff. Then the next two days are what we have, are, there's going to be an open house. And that is across the street above Scarborough grounds. Forgive me, I can't remember the address off the top of my head right now, but just across the street from Town Hall. And basically, the, the workspace is going to be open from nine in the morning, if not earlier, to nine at night, if not later. And folks are invited to come in anytime during those, during, during that time. See the lights on, come join us, essentially. And there'll be conversations occurring. You can sort of have a private conversation with any one of those experts. You can walk around and have a discussion. The, the idea is that that's really going to be a very open communication, that if there's a sidebar conversation, or a conversation happened about, let's just say, housing needs, and a conversation over here about transportation issues, you know, if they overhear what's happening, you know, the two might come together and tackle the issues. And then, and I'll note that on Wednesday, there are sort of specific, uh, let's see, or elements that will be discussed. And one of them has to do with sustainability and other transportation, and other design. And so folks who are interested in those different issues are going to be invited to come in in those two-hour blocks. But again, folks, if they, if that's when they can show up and they aren't interested in transportation, that's okay.
Is there on...
And then, yeah.
Go ahead. No, keep going.
I was going to say, and then sort of how it will wrap up is on the evening of Thursday, the 28th. The consultants will really spend the day on Thursday, and they'll be spending all their time sort of putting together everything they heard, and for basically presenting back, providing a feedback to the community, saying, "Here's what we heard. Here's what, when we talk about, you know, a certain element, here's what it might look like." So again, that's where sort of having the land use designers in-house. They'll be able to give us visual representations of the vision that they're hearing from our community. And so that's the four-day event. That's not the end of the conversation by any stretch of the imagination. From there, staff will continue a community discussion throughout the winter, but our consultants will ultimately be going away for about three or four months, taking all the information they've gathered and drafting a plan. Once that draft plan is prepared, which will be presented back to us, I think we, late winter, early spring, we will start the community discussion all over again. And we'll be diving into the plan, ensuring it represents what the community wants it to represent, so.
Okay. I may have missed it, but didn't you also say something's happening at the cafeteria? High school caf?
The first day.
The first day and the closing event.
Okay, so it can be at the caf?
Yeah.
High school caf as well as over there?
Yep, so it starts, starts at, like I said, Monday the 25th. Big community meeting, you know, sort of going to start at 6:30, be there as late as we need to be there.
At the, at the caf?
At the cafeteria, at the high school.
Not at, not over...
Not across the street.
Okay.
Across the street, then occurs Tuesday and Wednesday.
Okay.
And then Thursday evening closes again back across the street at the high school cafeteria.
Jay, on the day when you have, or when we'll have specific elements discussed, are, well, I know you mentioned land use management and transportation. Will there be, will there be like a natural resource element group?
No, I think that's sort of in the sustainability realm. And then, yeah, like I said, there's five or six specific sort of breakout, topic areas.
If I may, anything that isn't on the list is welcome to come up.
Still fair game.
There's nothing about this that is set in stone. So if what is recommended that we look at needs to be added to, you add to it. If something doesn't seem to be very interesting and people aren't responding, not a problem. There's no shoulds, have-tos, or musts here. It's all about just getting the actual, the real gut-level response to what do we want to see happening. And I think that the consultants have ideas of the, of how they think they might go at asking those questions, but nobody knows better than we do how to go about asking those questions. So I'm hoping that people will say, "Yeah, but," and throw something out there.
I should also mention that in addition to the four neighborhood meetings, we actually, staff got together, had sort of a, a meeting of conservation-minded folks between the Conservation Commission, Scarborough Land Trust, the Friends of Scarborough Marsh, and the Land Advisory Board were invited to a meeting, the Imagine Scarborough Meeting. SECO has also been working on sort of an economic visioning process. Various committees have been asked to start thinking about their vision for Scarborough, so lots of pieces are going to come together, hopefully. And I should also, another opportunity for a good plug, for at least all folks who serve on boards and committees, and I believe an email probably just went out within the last day about the All Boards Summit, which is going to be on September 7th. If you haven't received an email, my guess is you'll see one tomorrow. If you don't, get in touch with myself or Karen Martin. And this is really a process that's run through our friends at SECO and their visioning committee. For the last number of years, have brought together the All Boards and Committees Summit. And so we're going to do sort of a focus on the Imagine Scarborough discussion as well.
Question on, on the comp plan. Is it, is it, is the focus primarily on how we want our town to look in terms of zoning and things like that? Or is it also going to include how it's operated, how it's run? This is more, this is also for the public, Susan?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Yeah, it really does run the gamut. And I think one of the discussion points that we've had as we kick off this comprehensive planning process is that we're really standing on the foundation of the 2006 comprehensive plan. A lot of good work and efforts went into the 2006 comprehensive plan that really talked about identifying growth areas in the community and low-growth areas in the community where we might want to try to steer growth away from. And the zoning has really, in the last 10 years, we've done a lot of work to implement portions of that plan. And so, you know, obviously, you know, as you implement zoning, it takes time for that to mature and articulate. But I think, you know, this comp plan has been seen as refinement of that process, but also, more importantly, really looking at how do some of the, what I'll call emerging trends in the community sort of fit the pieces together? How does the need for more housing fit with transportation? How does that fit with the issues that we might be facing in terms of sea level rise, adaptation, resiliency? Energy consumption, I think, was something that was mentioned a little bit earlier, you know? Not that plug-in cars, you know, that's the only part of the discussion, but it's sort of weaving all those pieces of the fabric together, I think, is really what this comprehensive plan is about. So to your point, yeah, it's, it's looking sort of holistically.
Yeah, for instance, as a result of the 2006 plan, wasn't that the emergence of the TVC zones?
Yep, exactly. So, yes, that's a very good example.
Yeah. That's why it's important for the citizens to be aware of what's going on, because it could be a grocery store right next to them before they know it.
Well, there are also issues around, you know, the questions around municipal complex and some of those needs, and schools, and all that flows into traffic and housing and all the other things that people care about. So I hope, I do hope people are making those connections. And, you know, even though it may not be billed specifically as a, you know, a, a housing discussion or a traffic discussion per se, that they recognize that those, those are all interrelated.
And I should mention, you know, maybe, as you said, more for maybe the general public. You know, the comprehensive plan is really, it's a guiding policy document for the community, and it will hopefully shape the decisions that future leaders make moving forward in terms of when they're grappling with a, a hard issue. I think Cory mentioned, you know, municipal services. When we're starting to grapple with what are the needs of the community, this will be a document that helps guide those discussions and, and shape those policy decisions.
I'd just like to mention again that we are required to do this. We're not doing this because we think it's a good idea, period. We're doing it because the state says we will do it. And there are rules, there are guidelines and questions and, you know, all that wonderful stuff that, that we used in order to come up with what we've been talking about here. But bottom line, if we're going to have zoning, we have to have a long-range plan. And we would like to have our zoning reflect our long-range plan, which means that we need a long-range plan. And there isn't anything, I don't believe, that happens in a town that's more important than coming up with a long-range plan that truly reflects what the community wants. And anybody who says they didn't know what was happening, I'm sorry, but you're not paying much attention because we really want to know. So I just want to make sure that, you know, this is not something that we're choosing to do because it would make us feel good. We're doing this because we have no choice, and let's make it work.
Yeah, just to add again, though, I think the big difference this time, and I may be mistaken, is the outreach to the community. I don't recall that happening in previous conferences.
Everyone is different.
I know it, but I mean, when you look around the state, I, I don't think that's happening. And it's a great opportunity for the citizens to really have an input.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I moved to a turn.
I'll second that. All in favor? Thank you.